Our go our our group Macomb Solal Lakeside Green Group, our Deerfield Free Store Committee and our and Rack, Illinois. So we have speakers for each of those. And then at the end, we're just going to have a few comments about a few other committees. So if some housekeeping, we'd like you all to sign in in the chat so that we know who attended. And also, as we go along in the evening, if you have want to volunteer for one of the asks, if you have questions, which we'll be answering at the end, but feel free to put the questions in at any time. If for some reason you can't use the chat and you're interested in volunteering with the group or finding out more about it, then you can send Linda or me an email or send an email to Stacy in the office and she'll make sure it gets to us.
Send it, send it to me, okay?
Okay. Send it to Vanessa. She will make sure it gets back to Linda or me. When you're not speaking, if you could keep yourself on mute so that we have less background noise and also sometimes there's feedback. And that's it. So I'm gonna turn it over to Rabbi Ike to give us a divar, some words of wisdom to get started.
Great. Well, thank you very much. And thanks, everybody, for coming out, even though I hope you're all warm at home. So it is a very cold night. I just got back from walking the dog and I wasn't sure we were, either of us gonna make it around the block. So, but it's good to see you all. This week, we're reading Parashat Bo in the Book of Shemot in Exodus, where the last of the plagues that God brings upon the Egyptians and and the beginning of the journey into freedom for the Israelites. And I think, you know, these sections of the Torah are very meaningful and full of stories that we could tell. And certainly, it's very special when they coincide with celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King and the continuing journey to freedom that the way all of us are on and are still on to this day. And one of the things that this story reminds us of is that the world that is is not inevitable. It doesn't have to be the way that it is. It can change and it can change relatively quickly. But what it takes is people who are dedicated to making change, and that's people who are on this very Zoom. So we are the, you know, we can't be Moses, but we can be the catalyst for change that makes the world that is into the world that ought to be. So I want to thank you again for coming and let's do our part one step at a time to make the world a better place.
Thank you, Rabbi, for getting us started on the right foot. Thank you also for your support and your actions, which lead our, lead us and set a great example. Do you want to go ahead and just talk briefly about the new?
Yeah, what's going on?
Yeah.
So I've been in a few meetings with Deerfield clergy and Highland Park clergy and political leaders in Deerfield and Highland Park. And the question, of course, is coming up about buses of refugees getting dropped off in various places around in the Chicago area. And so each, each different township has to deal with that in its own kind of way and be prepared. So thus far, that hasn't happened here. But but the townships are getting prepared just in case. So a couple of things, just to let you know that as of now, there's only one place for refugees to get processed, and that's in Cook County in Chicago. So the the goal of all these projects as of now is that ultimately, we have to get those refugees to a place where they can be legally processed so that they can go on with the next steps in their journey. But we may have them here in our communities for a short period of time, you know, which might be only a couple of hours or it might be as long as a couple of days potentially, but but most likely just a couple of hours. And so the clergy group has gotten together and we're prepared to host people. So the the Deerfield First Presbyterian Church has agreed to be a location. The primary location, they've actually served as a pads shelter in the past. So they have room and when the pads shelter was there, we volunteered with meals and things like that. So so they're going to be the host, but they're calling on all of our communities to see if we have some volunteers, if we have people who would like to make meals, if we have people who want to serve as translators, if anyone, if we have people who can speak other languages and that sort of thing. So so certainly, we'd like to have some volunteers from our community. So I said, it may come up sort of at a moment's notice, you know. But we're just looking for people who might want to, if they're here overnight, do you want to come and cook breakfast, you know? Do you want to make a run over to Woodman's Grocery Store and pick up some refreshments and other kinds of?
I'm sorry, Rabbi, it's you're over your time.
Yeah, okay. That's, I think you get the point. We just need to get a list of volunteers.
Thank you. And for those of you who might have missed the initial announcements, please sign in and chat. And as we have these asks for different projects, if you can just put in that that's something you'd be interested in doing, that would be great. So and I'm just gonna, I don't know if this is true or not, but I did read in one article that there was a bus that came to Highland, that there were some refugees got dropped off in Highland Park and they put them on the train into the city. So I don't know if that's true or not, but certainly it's a possibility. So next, we're gonna hear from Aaron Sofian, our leader for Rack, Illinois. We've been members of Rack, Illinois ever since it was started and he'll tell us a little bit about what Rack, Illinois is and the current campaigns.
Thanks, Sharon. Yeah, happy to. I have been inspired by your rabbi and I can't help myself to say that also, one of my favorite stories is coming up in the Bible where they are at the Dead Sea and all of the Jews are looking around and looking to Moses to figure out what they're at the Red Sea, to figure out what to do. And Nachson steps up and starts to walk into the water to show that Jews will take action and make the change they want to see. We won't just wait around. So I feel like this call is sort of part of that, that style of Judaism of caring and trying to take our own action to make the difference in this, what we want to see in the world. So just to echo what the rabbi said. But I am Aaron Sofian. I am the lead organizer for Rack, Illinois. Rack, Illinois is the state chapter of the Religious Action Center. Some of you guys know this, but just to sort of rehash real quick, we are the official social justice wing and advocacy wing of the Reform Jewish Movement. We have both a sort of DC operation where we advocate at the federal level and the executive level. And then we also have nine state chapters, which Illinois is one of them, which we advocate to make change at the state level in Illinois. We work to do that by organizing and working in congregations to find people to work on what we would call sort of the upstream parts of social justices. So not just fixing the everyday problems, but also trying to work on the root causes. We have, so I, I will show you guys my favorite slide, which is actually for everybody that knows Julie Webb on this call, Julie Webb's a slide that I got from her. But our basic theory is, is this, if everybody can see this slide right here, which is that when us people are disorganized and we're not working together, then the big shark can eat us. But when we get organized and we work together on big things, then we can get to make the difference and we can use our power to shape the world as we want to see. So a couple of examples of that on our most recent work, we worked on the Coalition to End Money Bond, which ended bond or what some people call bail in Illinois. Since we've ended that, the prison populations have gone down between 20 and 40% across the state in different counties. We also have worked on the Shomer Shelter Campaign, which both, on both of these campaigns, McComb Solal Lakeside was heavily involved, which ended discrimination at the, ended discrimination for sorts of income when you're trying to find housing, which meant that a lot of people were being discriminated against for using sectioned housing or where they worked or whatnot. So that is sort of the background of the type of things that we work on. I want to say that McComb Solal Lakeside has been not just involved, but sort of integral to Rack, Illinois since its beginning. Both Rabbi Sarada and Jack Kaplan sit on our core team. Many of you who I've seen, I see on this Zoom call have done different actions with us, have come to different meetings. So know that Rack, Illinois could not be what it is today or will not be what it is going forward without McComb Solal Lakeside's help and all of the work that you guys do in social justice in general. Let me just give you a quick sort of where everything is going this year. So you guys have an update and know what will be coming. And then I will drop a link in the chat, which is a way to sign up for our emails and our updates and you will be able to get whatever updates that we are getting. And you will be able to see a couple of boxes there. And I will say real quick about that. So what is going on now is the last sort of year or so, we did a listening campaign, which many of you were involved in, where we talked about the brokenness of the world and we wanted to hear what Jews in Illinois really cared about to work on and advocate for. What we came to was gun violence prevention and barriers to affordable housing. And so we are currently looking into campaigns that would work to solve those problems, mostly legislative. Both actually Jack Kaplan and Rabbi Sarada are helping lead that effort on picking the campaign. We are hoping to have our legislative or whatever, the campaign will be picked by mid-February and then a kickoff in March and then we will do action in April, May. The legislative session in Illinois tends to peak or climax in May, which is when they have their long session and pass a lot of their laws. So by action, I mean, some of the stuff people on this call have done before, but we would be doing legislative meetings, phone banking, we might do witness slips, things like that in that nature to affect our legislatures to vote for legislation that matters and makes a difference. After that come May, we will move into our Every Voice, Every Vote campaign, which is a nice way of saying get out the votes or get out the vote effort, which will be working on the election through our congregations. That will start in June with a kickoff and then we will be doing all of our different options. I'm gonna break down our Every Voice, Every Vote into sort of three parts. One is the national action, which many of you guys have done before. It is, we have done it through postcarding before. It is nonpartisan, but we postcard to people who are high opportunity voters who have not voted a lot in the past and try to push them to vote. This year, a lot of that postcarding will be built around the states where, to be completely frank, abortion is on the ballot. So that will be Florida, Arizona, maybe Nevada. And so we will be heavily pushing people to turn out to vote and vote in that part of the election. And so that will be what a lot of our postcarding parties and postcarding is built around. I will say again, just more laurels, but McComb Solal Lakeside, I just looked at the numbers. It looked to be sent around 450 to 500 postcards two years ago. And that's one of our highest. And usually those numbers are a little short, to be completely honest. So again, stand out. But we will be doing those same sort of postcarding parties where we push people through postcards to vote. That will be sort of the national part of our Every Voice, Every Vote. We are also working on a more local part, which will be canvassing slash phone banking slash text banking into Wisconsin. Many of you guys know Rhonda Linder, but she is one of the organizers in Milwaukee for two interface organizations and they do a lot of organizing around registering to vote and turning people out. So we'll be partnering with Vivek and Tikunat Yer, which are the two organizations, and doing work in Wisconsin. So you'll see some of that. And then we also want to do a little bit of education, which is we are working on putting together sort of webinar education about how to educate yourself on judicial elections. Every, everybody in Illinois votes for judges. Judges are your most likely elected official that you will see in Illinois. And it is also very hard to figure out what are sources that you can look to or how to even find out sources to figure out to vote for. So we're gonna do a little bit of education on that. And so that is sort of our Every Voice, Every Vote, and that will go from June through the election. So basically, what we'll be doing is going into state campaign and then into our national, our Every Voice, Every Vote, Get Out the Vote campaign. Yes, I think I spoke a little fast there, but that is everything coming up for Rack, Illinois. I just want to drop a link in the chat. If anybody wants to get our emails, you can click that link. You can actually get emails from any of the states. You can get emails about our Litak Ken Seminar, which is what our teams, what we send our teams to. But if you, if you also want to get updates about our Every Voice, Every Vote, which I was talking about, click the the pro, the national program. It's called the Campaign Subscription List, Updates on the Reform Movement's Campaign for Justice, and that will make sure that you're getting those updates. I think that is everything I have to say.
You made it with one minute to spare. Thank you. That was a lot of great information and we look forward to participating fully again in all the campaigns. So next, we're gonna call on Jay Futterman and whoever else from the McComb Solal Lakeside Green Group are gonna talk about the multitude of programming and opportunities that you offer.
Okay, thank you. So I think the thing that I'm kind of most excited about working on here in the coming months is our Community Solar Program. 2023 just finished. It is by far the hottest year Planet Earth has had in the last 100,000 years. And all the other hottest years have also been within the last 10 years. So that's really concerning. And one of the simplest things that all of us can do to work on climate change is changing where we get our energy from. When you plug something into the wall here, about 50% of that electricity comes from directly burning fossil fuels. But we in Illinois have the opportunity and and the duty, I think, to change where we get our electricity from. Our congregation is sourcing about 80% of our electricity from a solar field in Northwest Illinois through a company called Solstice. And the opportunity to buy electricity directly from that solar field is open to all of us as well. I'm gonna put in a link to the the program. Community solar basically means you're just telling this company, hey, I will buy electricity that you produce. Those electrons all flow into the same grid that we're all using now, but by agreeing to purchase from them, more and more of the grid will be based from clean renewable sources. So joining this program doesn't affect the way you use electricity in your house. The lights will go on whether the sun is shining or not, but it will guaranteed save you money on your electric bill, probably about 10 to 15% per month guaranteed. It's a state regulated program. It's not some shady, you know, join now and then we raise your rates in in a year. It's guaranteed to be cheaper than what you pay for comm ed. And they will give a $25 donation for everyone who subscribes to our congregation. So it's a good way to give back to McComb, good way to save money. And legit, literally, it's like the easiest thing that you can do with the biggest climate impact and you're just gonna pay less. So check out that link. If you have other questions about community solar or rooftop solar, I'm happy to help out with that. And then another thing that we're doing with our green group is the, we have another, one of our Make Less Mess dinners coming up. I'll put a link to the signup for that in the chat. And Jenny, you can, you can call us all about it.
Oh, super. Yeah, in case you haven't come, our Make Less Mess dinners are created with the idea of not using a bunch of disposables and having more waste generated during our meals. So we use all reusable cups, plates, napkins. It's like a whole real place setting and it feels nice and special. And we all bring in the food together and share and just take what we want. We compost everything that we can't. It's a potluck, yeah, vegetarian, nut-free potluck. So that happens right before services and this time we're gonna be talking about Tuvaish Vat. So we've got a little activity we're sending out to Love Learning to have kids send in ideas about trees and caring for the earth that we'd like to read or anyone could send those ideas in really. We also have created a list for all of the B'nai Mitzvah kids to look for green service projects. So we've shared that with Love Learning. And if anyone has ideas that, you know, it's an ongoing list, so please send them in or if you would like a copy of it, we're happy to share it. And we have our garden that will be coming up in the spring, our pollinator garden. So we'll send out news about that and cleaning it up. And does Andy, do you want to throw anything in? You're, and you might be muted.
Okay, yeah, I'm not muted anymore. Yeah, we have an ongoing nature walks that we have every, every three months or so in different with a leader from the park district. So that will, I think the first one will be in March. I'm not really sure. It's on the calendar. We're just trying to integrate sustainable practices into everything we do and we're trying to build on that as we go along. So each year, we've more brought more new practices that are kinder and make less of an impact. So watch for those and, you know, and join us.
Yeah, our next meeting is Thursday, this Thursday. So I will put our Zoom link in the chat for that as well. And I'm sure it's been on a couple of Facebook posts as well.
I think you have the agenda. Jay has the agenda. You have the agenda if that's of interest.
I think that's it.
Yeah, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I'll just put in my two cents. This is a continuum of opportunities, you know, from the, the solar project and the policies that, you know, you provided us with postcards and issues to contact our representatives on, you know, down to the very hands-on of a dinner where we have no waste. So it's really something for everyone. So thank you. And next, we'll hear from Linda Muskin about the Deerfield Free Store.
McComb has been involved with the Deerfield Free Store for about 18 months now, almost from the time the organization started. They're housed in what used to be the School for Holy Cross on Waukegan, just north of Deerfield Road. Initially, it was spread out just in the library of the school. Now it's the entire first floor. And what it is, is basically a free department store for refugees who are here, who have an apartment and who have an appointment for one hour to shop, that easy. So they need people to help them shop, bag the stuff, sort the stuff, bring in stuff. And what the needs are vary all the way through the season, right? Right now, we don't need women's clothes, but we do need a lot of underwear, you know. And it's, we post the list of what we need all the time and you'll see it on the Deerfield Free Store link. It's updated every week. We work with a number of different faith groups to support this organization. And on the third Sunday of each month, McComb in conjunction with the Unitarian North Shore Church staff the free store from, I don't know, 11:45 in the morning until 4:30 in the afternoon or something. And there are two hour shifts so that there's a way to, to block out the time you sign up to be able to do it. And we've learned a lot about how to do it better, how to serve people better, how to use Google Translate, which has been just phenomenal. I can't say enough about it. We've translated Russian. We've translated for Afghans. We're working with Venezuelan families now as the most recent immigrants. It's a, it's extremely rewarding. It's a high demand kind of thing. Right now, we work with people on Tuesday nights. We sort stuff on Wednesdays. We work with people again on Sunday afternoon. And frankly, if we had the staff, we could work with them seven days a week. There's plenty of demand and we have the inventory. We just need people who are trained to know how to do this, which brings us to the next point. We've actually put together a whole training program and are offering it for the first time Saturday, January 27th and again on Thursday, February 1st. And I can put that in the chat along with the link on where you sign up to do this for an hour and a half. They'll go through the whole thing about the protocol and what to say and not to say and how to greet the people. And we've just gotten a lot smarter about how to do this because we've, we've done it so many times. We do, the time, Sheri just asked, what's the time commitment? It depends on when you go, but usually it's a couple of hours at a time, you know. And the the time commitment for the training is 90 minutes. You're welcome. It's nice to be able to communicate. I think, I think the work that they do, everybody's looking for a hands-on project. You can see immediately that you're making a difference when you help these people shop. It's that simple. It's very rewarding. They're very grateful. And, you know, plus you get to sort stuff and work in collaboration with other people that you may not know. So I don't know what else I need to, and if there are any questions about it, I'm happy to take questions, but I think we're doing questions later. Sharon, do I leave anything up? And kids under 18 participate? Yes, with an adult.
Right. No, I think you did a great job. And if there's other questions, it looks like we're gonna have time at the end for questions. Everybody's really sticking to their time. Or you can put your questions in the chat and we'll answer them. But like Linda said, it's just the people who come are very appreciative. It's gotten better as we've gone along. And we're partnering with other congregations in our community to, to do this work and it's, that's been great too. We've, we've made a lot, met a lot of people and made a lot of connections. So next, we're just gonna hear, get a little information about a couple of other projects we have going on and groups that need some help. I'm gonna, for many years, we've been a host site. Twice a year, we have a blood drive at McComb Solal Lakeside. Well, we had it before. It was McComb Solal Lakeside. But anyway, Rebecca Zacham's gonna talk to us a little bit about the next blood drive and what it involves and how you can help.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Rebecca Zacham. Really quick, I'm just, I wrote something. I'm just gonna read it, better, easier than talking. I'm glad to be participating in this Takunolom Town Hall and appreciate everyone's efforts for repairing, please move. Sorry, kid in the way. Appreciate everyone's efforts to repairing our world through action, advocacy and awareness. The McComb Solal Lakeside Blood Drive is another way to repair the world and commit to Pekua Neferesh, the Hebrew term for saving life. The Red Cross just announced that the US is facing an emergency blood shortage. The number of people donating blood currently is the lowest it's been in two decades and the demand is great. The chief medical officer of the Red Cross said a person The chief medical officer of the Red Cross said a person needs life-saving blood every two seconds in our country. That's kind of astounding. Um, the next blood drive is April 14th from eight to 1:30. We love to have returning donors. Some of you I recognize. Um, new donors, young, 16 years is the minimum with apparent permission. Old and, um, there are very few restrictions. And I'm not immune to the fact that not everyone is eligible or feels comfortable donating. Totally get it. Um, my goal would just be that everyone spreads the word about blood donation. If you can find one person to donate, that's a mitzvah in itself and your contribution to action and awareness and Takun Olam. Briefly, just my personal story on the importance in being a co-chair is I'm a nurse, so I know and see firsthand how important blood donation is. Um, I know someone who, um, lost her brother to blood cancer last spring. He was, he was in his 50s, well-respected physician in Ohio. And in his funeral, his wife, who's also a nurse, said like, the, the best way the people at the funeral could help was to donate blood. And I think about that every time now. It's easy to sign up, um, directly through Vitalent or, um, you can check with me or one of the co-chairs. I'll put my email and the Vitalent website in the chat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. And for, and I know you needed to coordinate, join in us. So thank you for that too. Um, so next we're going to hear from Amy Plotnick about our Chassid Circle and what, uh, and maybe from Marilyn. Um, I don't know how you are handling that, but, uh, what our programming is going to be going forward.
Hi, so I co-chair with Marilyn Myers and Bev Sherman-Lavitt for the Chassid Circle. And I would love to share what the Chassid Circle offers our Macomb community and its purpose. Our purpose is to be available to provide comfort, kindness, and a sense of connection and support when a difficult moment or a crisis arrives. To that means, our committee currently offers the Faling Mitzvot. We write notes of condolences and notes for special occasions and celebrations. We provide rides to Macomb for services for those who cannot drive and have expressed an interest through either Vanessa or the clergy. We do personal visits with the wellness gift of a challah, Shabbat candles and a coffee cake to those who are home due to surgery or an illness. And again, these names will come to our committee through Vanessa or the clergy. And we also do the yurt site calls for the first year reminders. We ask how they're doing, if they have any need to speak with clergy, the date of the candle lighting, and to let them know the date that their loved ones' names will be read at services. We also participate in a phone pal program with the blind residents who live at the Friedman Place in Chicago. Currently, we do have two congregants who have a relationship with residents who wanted a phone pal. It has been really appreciated and very successful, and we are always looking for more volunteers and look forward to warmer weather when you can actually meet them and go for a walk around their grounds. Also, anyone in our community who is celebrating a birthday or an anniversary, they're invited for a special blessing on the last Friday of that month during Shabbat services. And we also make, uh, delivery holiday gift bags for residents who are in assisted living, and these include Rosh Hashanah, Pesach and Hanukkah. These are just a few initiatives that we're providing to help meet the needs of our community. Your interest is always welcome, whether you want to become involved or if you know someone who could benefit from these Mitzvot. Your involvement can only enhance the sex, the success of our committee. So if there's any interest, just let us know. We're so happy to have you join us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy and Marilyn and Bev. For, I know you're kind of regenerating this for us. Um, and we look forward to seeing all that you're going to do and, and helping. Um, so, uh, just a little note from Alan Green who chairs along with Amy, um, and other people, um, Len Soloff, work on our refugee families. Um, and Alan couldn't be here tonight. He had another board meeting to go to. But he did want us to ask that if people are interested in participating in advocacy on behalf of refugees and asylum seekers, um, which is almost all going to be done online. Um, that they send him an email or put your name in the chat and we can let him know. Um, he sometimes asks us to do some of the, um, items like Erin also mentioned, like doing witness slips or sending postcards or, or, uh, going to a meeting with your representative to express our position on, on, um, how we can help the refugees, uh, acclimate to our country and, and, um, at better conditions. So, um, and if you have specific questions, you can get in touch with Alan. So I think that's all of the formal presentations. Is that right, Linda? Um, so we have lots of time for questions or, uh, interests, you know, if there's something you're passionate about, um, that you think we should be doing more in a certain arena, you can let us know that. Either raise your hand or put something in the chat. Um, and, uh, and we can talk about it for the rest of our time. And I saw Andy's hand was up.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, remind people that we also sponsor the Soup Kitchen at Beth Emmett twice, twice a year, sometimes three times a year. Um, it's a commitment everybody that, that Rabbi has endorsed. And, um, you know, it's might be something, since it's only one, you can only do it, you can do it one time. You don't have to sign up for a, you know, whole big commitment, um, just to consider it. There's about 65 to 85, I would say, people that get served there, um, every Wednesday and different groups come in and help sponsor it. So we cook, we shop, we serve and we, and, and it's really a very warm, friendly kitchen and a nice thing to be part of. So, uh, the next one is February 28th. The publicity is out, I'm sure. And, um, the hardest thing is signing up. We never get that quite right. Um, but this time I put to, you can notify the office or I put my phone number in the, um, in the thing, but that's a problem. Anyway, um, the office is a safe bet. They'll get to me. So, something to consider.
Thank you, Andy. Yes. Um, I think, you know, there's several projects that, that weren't mentioned, but so, uh, if somebody wants to mention one, that's good too.
Sherry has the hand up.
Thank you, Vanessa. I appreciate that. First of all, thank you to everybody going through this. It means a lot and it just shows such character, uh, from our synagogue. So thank you. Um, just two questions. One, um, I've gotten to be friends with an, an older, uh, gentleman at our synagogue. And my first question is, is are there things just for visiting older people or programs just to help them feel connected? I mean, he's become my new favorite person, but, um, I'm just thinking more broadly from a community for, you know, outreach or sitting with older people and connecting with them. That was the first question. And, um, then I have one more after that, if that's all right.
Um, Amy or Vanessa, do you want to talk about?
Uh, we have a lot of programs for, um, adults and, uh, we have a lot of, you know, we have Shabbat dinner and all of that stuff. And if anyone is interested in championing, um, that type of program, I'd be happy to sit with them and, um, I'm sure the Chassid Committee would help us out. Um, and at this point, um, it, for instance, somebody called and they needed a ride Friday night and, um, I just have to call out Amy. She's going to pick up this person. And so, you know, we try to make those relationships happen.
And also, um, heading towards the spring, we've been talking about starting some, uh, like teas, you know, afternoon teas where people can come and gather and elderly people can talk about their life stories, share a moment together. So those kinds of things are what we want to start to implement. So there'll be more to come.
Great. I also want to give credit to the Green Group. Um, they've taken some nature walks. Anyone's, um, I'm pretty sure, I mean, we live in Illinois. I'm sure they're not that strenuous. Uh, and I think, uh, right, anyone would be welcome on those, on those nature walks. And that might be good for some, um, older members to get a little, get a little walk in.
Amy, I'd love to talk to you more offline at sometime in the next month.
Okay. And I think Marilyn wants to add something as well. She's.
Sure. I'll unmute her.
Okay.
Go ahead, Marilyn.
Well, thank you so much for, for bringing that up because that is something, um, we at Solal before we, uh, merged um, and before COVID, something that we did do. Um, I don't know if I ever even spoke to Amy about it, but I personally have visited and so had others, seniors who, um, were members in congregants, our congregation, spent time with them, got to enjoy them in their homes and their interests and their hobbies and learned about planting. And I learned about places they traveled. And so Amy and I are springboards and we have all this in the back of our heads. And we also wanted to do some intergenerational. There's some very talented people in our community that are seniors and some young people. So, you know, Amy and I have, we're trying to do what we do well and not to spread out and do too many things as we were, as you had said, we're springboarding. But we do want to do these things and thank you for bringing it up and bringing it to mind. And if you'd like to meet, uh, with Amy and with me and our other co-chair and talk about some of these things, that would be great.
I, I love that. Please focus on the road. I'm nervous just watching you. Safety is first. But I'll tell you that yes, put my name down. Jerry Rubel has become one of my best friends and he's 99 years old and part of the synagogue. And I'd love to, you know, I have some ideas, so I'm happy to share that. And just one last point, because I don't want to take up all the time. One thing I'm pretty passionate about is how do we help our kids with addressing antisemitism? I don't know if that's out of the Takun Olam of what we're talking about here, but I just think so many of our kids are not prepared for what they're starting to deal with and what they will be dealing with. I don't know if there is any interest or efforts or if it's outside of this, but I'm, as a mother of a soon-to-be college student, I, I know that the world she's growing up in is very different than my older children.
I, I, I don't know that it's the purview of this committee, but I certainly hear it and that's something. Um, you know, I, we have clergy classes. We have a lot of, um, interesting things going on. And of course, um, talking with Ashley to find out what's happening in Love Learning and, and confirmation. So, um, uh, um, I think that's a great point and I'll write it down and, um, and check it out.
Thank you so much, and I'll look forward to connecting with you all.
Also, some of our partner organizations such as RAC offer, um, you know, wider-based webinars, Zoom calls on some, and education on some of those topics. So, uh, we can promote those more, but also when you get on some of these email lists, you'll get information about that too. Laura?
I can't, there we go.
Can you, can you hear me? Oh, sorry. Um, I, new laptop and first zoom on it. So, um, I just wanted to say as far as, um, working with the kids with antisemitism, um, I'm sure Ashley will have more to say about it, but I do work with, I work with all the kids teaching art and I also work with the seventh grade class, um, as their main teacher. And I, I just to, to reassure you that, um, you know, an enormous amount of what we do and our work is, um, is working on antisemitism. Because every day that we're there teaching our kids about their own Jewish identities, um, we are giving them the power to, um, you know, to, to work with that and to have, you know, a positive Jewish self-identity. Um, I've, I've had questions in class, um, some really sad questions, not necessarily that the kids have had, like someone come up and, and say something to them, um, or do something to them, but really more their fears of, you know, what if someone comes up to me or what if someone comes to this school? Like, that's, that's more, you know, just sort of the, the ominous questions. Um, and we definitely work with that. And, um, so, you know, I think, but I think really, you know, the biggest thing, and that's for all of us, is to, you know, educate ourselves on our, on our own Jewish identities. Um, and then, and kind of be aware of, of what is going on out there. Um, and definitely in the Anti-Defamation League and, and there are so many resources out there um, for ourselves. And I think as, as the, the adults in the community, that's what we can give our kids. So I hope that, I, I hope that answers some of your questions. Um, and, and if you don't mind, it's like I'm still not muted. Um, I did have a couple of questions, um, as far as, uh, some of the work that you guys are doing. Um, and I sent Amy a message and, um, in, in the comments, uh, I, I work with the seventh grade class. So, um, things like, sorry. So things like, um, what we were saying about putting gift bags together. If there's something where you're like, I really need more help and the Takun Olam Committee doesn't have the, the people to do it with you. Um, I've got the seventh graders and, you know, we have from, from 12:15 until 1:30 on Sunday. And usually, um, we can get like 20 minutes of like, get some good hard work done with them. And I have like 25 students. So, um, please let me know if there is something that you would like to work with. Um, I know we've done some stuff with the Green Committee and things like that. So, um, yeah, we're, we're available to help out with that. Yes, Amy?
I was just going to mention, I don't know if this is the right platform, but our last bags that we did, we included, um, some little children colored beautiful pictures and we put a picture in it. The seventh graders might do a really nice project. It's just something to add in there.
Oh, they love to.
Yeah, that's a thought. We can talk about that.
Absolutely. They, they love doing that. So, um, yeah, let me, let me know. They're enthusiastic to help with anything. So, um, and I, I love getting them to that idea of them being adults, young adults in our community and being able to join things like the Takun Olam Committee and things like that. So, all right. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, other questions? Was, uh, Maida?
This is not a question, but, um, we are looking for people who are interested in, um, the RAC, the two projects of RAC Illinois, the two issues that RAC Illinois has been focused on this year. The, um, gun violence prevention and access to affordable housing. Um, so if any of you are interested in being a part of that, uh, please get in touch with me. Um, also, uh, one of the things we were thinking about is the possibility of invite of, um, inviting, uh, our teens and preteens to be, uh, a part of this, especially the gun violence. So again, if you are interested or know anybody who's interested, please let me know.
Uh, thank you. Um, oh.
Marilyn has her hand up again.
Share about the seniors, something Amy and I have done and we let it go too long, but for seniors, we brought, um, Amy picked up some bags and we brought some library books from our library to seniors who were unable to get to the library. We dropped them off. We've been very patient and maybe too neglectful, me, not Amy, in picking them up and bringing them back because. picking them up and bringing them back, because some of them had said to me, "How long can I keep them?" And it takes me a long time to read them and then I guess it's lax. But that's another thing we've done for seniors, we've brought them library books. And I don't know whether that something will continue or not, Amy and I were gonna discuss that. And then the other thing is, we didn't, we had talked about the arts and crafts with you, Laura, and we didn't want to burden you because you have so much. That was brought up, Amy was very aware of the education and the department, but even the Shabbat candles, if we could bring you Shabbat candles and you'd be willing to decorate them, or if I purchased napkins and you were willing to decorate those for college covers, that would be other projects, it would be really wonderful for us to distribute with the Hala.
Yeah, we can do all that.
Great, great.
Other topics or committees or thoughts on what we should be doing? Or I'm just gonna call out Jack Kaplan, because Erin did talk about you before, thank you for joining us and.
Glad to be here, I'm sure Erin covered the topic very well. And I really appreciate Maida calling out the need for, we really do want your input on the two issues, on the affordable housing and on the gun violence. And I, and I must also really like the idea, particularly for our congregation, getting more of our youth involved in the issue, particularly around prevention of gun violence. So hopefully we can identify some, some of our younger members participate in the campaign.
Thank you. And I'm sure we can reach out to Rabbi and Amy to get, I, I'm assuming the teens would be a good.
You know, one more thing I was gonna add is, I know we're talking about volunteers for multiple different things from doing some of this work with the elder population, et cetera. And I was just gonna say, maybe one just kind of crazy idea is to be able to go to the Bar and Bat mitzvah classes where they're looking for mitzvah projects and being able to highlight some of these ideas and say, "Hey, like, I'm happy to help sponsor, for example, ways of getting involved with seniors or, or projects and, and just connecting people up and they have to do a mitzvah project." And also, it's kind of like, it's the whole spirit of what we're trying to do is teach our kids about Takunolam, especially at these different key times. So I just put that out there as another way to, even if we had like a list and we went to the Bar and Bat.
Well, funny you should mention that, Lynn, go ahead, we've actually done something like that.
So, yeah, we're, we're thinking alike. My name's Lynn Frank, I am.
And Alice, sorry.
And Alice Cohn, Alice Cohn and I have been meeting with the sixth graders because that's the year going into their Bar and Bat mitzvah preparations. And we've been bringing in speakers, we started with Gratitude Generation in Deerfield, they have a specific volunteer who coordinates mitzvah projects. And we thought, let's start with them, we're currently trying to put together a time for members from the Green Group to meet with them and refugee groups to meet with the sixth graders. So this is the first year we've done it. It's off to a great start and hopefully we can either expand on it, keep it going. But David Valentine asked us to help him with that and, and we are. And then while I'm unmuted, one quick announcement, if you don't mind, we're collecting hats, gloves, scarves, warm clothing for the Gary Comer Youth Center in Chicago. And I decided that instead of waiting till the end of the month, I'm gonna deliver what we have so far tomorrow because it's really, really cold. And those children and teens are in need and unfortunately, there are young people sleeping in unheated garages, crawl spaces, unheated apartments, basements, because they do not have stable housing. And one of the ways we can help them is to help them stay warm. So if anybody has any warm hats, gloves, et cetera, there's a collection bin outside the office, thank you.
Thank you for responding. Lynn and Alice have been doing a great job of, of working, this started last year, working with the sixth graders and we can certainly expand that to other grades too.
I think Lori Morrison meant, did you mean to say, when is the collection being, like, when is it ending, when is it being taken over there? Because I bet Lori wants to bring more things in.
The collection, the collection goes until the end of the month, so I'm gonna drop off what we have so far tomorrow. Anything more, we'll go in the bin and we'll make a separate collection, a separate collection and delivery at the end of the month also.
Thank you, thanks Vanessa.
All right, we just have a couple minutes left, is there anything that we can answer or put your questions or interests in the chat? We've had a lot of information tonight. And like I said, we're hope that this is gonna start an ongoing dialogue. What else, Linda? You're muted. And before Linda jumps in, I just wanna thank again everyone who attended tonight. And I just wanna say what an amazing group of people we have at McCombsale Lakeside who do so many wonderful Takunolam projects, both within the congregation and then equally as much just outside on their own. So it's, it's a learning experience all the time for me of what there is to be involved with.
I wanted to jump in and say thank you to Linda and Sharon for really shepherding us, keeping us on track. And it's not an easy job and wrangling everybody and I, yes, Alice is clapping, I, I thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity and Maida, thank you for being the timekeeper, I know it's a great job that you're, you're doing, thank you. Oh, nobody wants to do it, no, really, you're very good at it, thank you. If there are no other questions, I'd like to report that we're finishing one minute early, well done, thanks. Be well, stay warm.
Bye, everyone. So long.
Bye, everybody.
Hi, everybody.